August 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
We will throw a call for this evening. Jaclyn Prast, here, President. Kevin Danby, here. Alfred Wilcox, here. Erin Caldwell, Brenda Dyson, and Chuck Gaten. Seated this evening will be Jaclyn Prast, Kevin Danby, Alfred Wilcox, Erin Collins, and I'm sorry, not Collins, Erin Caldwell, I apologize, and myself, Charles Gaten. I'd like to, let's go to public hearing. Tonight, we're going to be talking about three, four applications. 21/22-27 Frederick and Sandra Sattler of 15 Cottage Road. 22/23-1 Anna Canaris of Two Obden Trail. 22/23-2C Shannon Taitman and Tamara Wasserman of 228 Maple Ave. And 22/23-3C Gina Cobble of 5 Lighthouse Lane. 21/22-27 Frederick and Sanders Sattler has been, the application has been put on hold until the next meeting. So nothing's being heard on that at this day. The next would be 22/23-1 Anna Canaris seeks a variance of par 24-6-2, structure coverage slash 20% allowed, slash 22.49% proposed, and par 24.5.1 bracket, street line setback slash 25 feet required, 9.3 feet proposed bracket of the zoning regulations, specific construction of an 80 square foot front landing and 816 square foot detached garage at Two Obden Trail, I said, Obden Trail, map 19 slash lot 306, Residence A District Coastal Area Management Zone. And who will be speaking on their behalf?
Anna Canaris.
The floor is yours.
What we're proposing to do is first trying to make our property more conforming. The existing garage is actually built, part of it is outside the building lines, and the shed that's on the property is almost entirely outside the building line. What we would like to do is build, we're gonna get rid of the garage and the shed, build one building within the property building lines and have a second floor attic area on the garage for storage. The house right now doesn't have a basement or attic, so we need that as our storage. We need front steps, we need a large, we want to accommodate ramps, handicap ramps. We need portable handicap ramps for my mom, and we need to have that landing a little bit bigger so that she can go up and land on it and then be able to go into the front door. I do have, I could help you at all, I have pictures of what the handicaps look like that we do have. And I apologize for the multiple survey maps, our surveyor had an issue, one with his equipment, and two with understanding exactly what the town needed as far as dimensions, measurements. So that is why we attached the, yeah, we have this, we attached the.
Realizers regarding the front porch, there's nothing on here?
Nothing.
On the second one. Let me hear nothing yet, because that was very confusing that there was two, and no one told me that it wasn't on the same one. Oh, I apologize, yes, there are two, yes. And yes, that's what I was apologizing for, the multiple maps.
No need to apologize, we only got one.
Do you, do you know if, when they did the site map of the house, did they, did they count the eaves or they did not count the eaves in the house?
I believe they did count the eaves, the eaves are where the roof comes down.
Right.
Yes, for coverage.
Well, it's less than 12,500 square feet, so that's why we need to get the numbers right.
A lot that's small, you know, the eaves are for free.
Right, what happens is if you have under 12,500 square feet, we don't count the eaves, so we need the recalculation.
Okay.
Because that will help you, not hurt you.
Okay.
So that we can reduce the building coverage.
Okay. Yeah, I can't tell you 100% if it does or it doesn't. Like I said, our surveyor was a little iffy. And unfortunately, trying to get another survey, they were all like two months out, so.
It looks like you started in January on this, that's the date on this.
The original one, yeah, yes. In total, what we are requesting is a 1.32% increase in the coverage of the woman's half right now.
One of the things I ask is, actually building coverage is 20%, anything over that becomes an issue. And anything over, if you have like 20, 21.17, that's the standard. So now you're asking to go even more over, that's, that's why I'm asking.
Right, yes, the existing is 21.17, so it is over, yes, but I'm proposing 22.49.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Is there any access at the back of the house for a wheelchair?
No, we do have a back door, but there's more steps back there, and it's a, it's a stone step, but it's almost like a corner, it's an oval shape. I wouldn't be able to do ramps in that area. So, and that's between the house and the garage. The garage is there now and the proposed garage.
I'm not sure if we're taking these out, the shed out. If you get it all, I'm not sure that you, that the, if there's really any increase.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, right, exactly. That was my question, Kevin. See, I agree with you. That's what I was trying to get to, because I don't know the math on it right there.
Yeah, that shed will be totally removed.
I'm assuming that when he removed the shed, that he removed it from the coverage.
But we don't know.
We don't know, because here's the problem, we don't have enough information. I can tell you right now, I need, we need to have confidence in our drawing.
If you, if you look at, if one foot is 10 feet, the perimeter of this, let's just say it's 160 all the way around, that's 160 square feet alone.
Exactly, right.
Which, and then you take the shed out of it, garage is a little bit more, and even if you, you bring in the steps, it's minor.
Oh, I agree with you. I just wanted to make, I was just trying to get the numbers dialed, okay, because I wanted to make sure that, that, because they had the demolition of the shed, that they actually took it out of the, of the coverage. Because I just, because the zoning, his drawing is crossed out, we see another chart, it's. We want to get to yes, but we really need.
It's probably so close to be.
Yeah, I know.
Is it possible, if they were approved, that they could file a new plan afterwards?
I don't know.
Or subject to.
If I had some good drawings, because then I could do the calculation, let's, let's do it ourselves, okay, which was. I know what Kevin said, that was the point I was trying to, I think it was so close, okay?
The map, the first map, the date is June 19th, there are eight months into this.
Yeah, I know. Glad to get a result today.
And the, the second story is just for storage? That's just storage, yes, for the attic area, so. Just some holiday stuff. Unfortunately, I love the house, Christmas storage. We originally bought this house saying that it's going to be our second home after spending time down here. But we really liked it, and we sold our house in April and stayed here permanently, so.
Once you get to the third or fourth.
So we were there for over 25 years in our home, so we're hoping that this will be that and some more.
116, if we go to here, and we reduce this, if this number goes to 2, 2.
257.
Yeah, 2575, yeah, second. 2. Minus 116 equals that. Bet that number, so that was 24593. 20, perfect, okay, 21.4.
Oh, good.
That's.
It's actually a reduction.
It's a reduction, okay, I can live with that, so, for the record. So, I'm gonna add, for the record, the new calculation in coverage is 20, 21.47%. The coverage, the square footage is 2,459.38. These 2,459.38 square feet. And the, 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 the building coverage comes in at 21.47.
Based on that. 0.03 less than it was.
Yeah, it just makes it easier.
Thank you.
You're welcome, okay. I'd like to open it, do you have anything else you'd like to say? Open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against it?
Thank you.
Could you come up and state your name, please? I'm sorry, but you can just yell it.
Sure, I'll come up. Why should I get on camera anyway?
Your two minutes of fame.
Your two minutes of fame, there you go.
Where am I?
Just talk.
My name is Pat Sepenbreno. I live on Old Sea Lane in Indian Town. Over the years, I've been responsible for orientation of new Indian Town residents, and you'd be surprised with 280 home residential area, how many new people are moving into Indian Town with similar issues, taking a cottage or taking something smaller and realizing that the place they left had a lot more room, and now they have to cope, and they need storage, which is what we had happen many years ago when Attorney Chivers, no longer practicing, but represented us for that, for a two-car garage, and luckily, we had a double lot and it all went well. So I could see the advantages now of trying to say this is going to be our permanent home and we need additional storage. I'm hoping that you see your way through to understanding the fairness that they're giving up a shed to try to make this happen, try to play ball just to get the additional storage. But it's commonplace where we are in Indian Town that people are needing a little bit more than anticipated when they get down here from, from where they left. So I'm speaking in favor of this application, and, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir, could you spell your last name for me?
S E T T is in Thomas, E M is in Michael, B is in boy, R I N O.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against it? Is anybody, do we have anybody online that wants to raise a hand?
If you're on Zoom, if you could use the raise hand function.
Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment, and I'd like to open it up for discussion. I just like to make a few comments. The fact that we're removing the shed eliminates a nonconformity. The fact that we're building above the garage increases bulk to a nonconformity, and the fact that the, the new proposal is less than the, than the existing coverage. I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement on those three things, that our surface coverage has, we've seen a slight reduction in surface coverage, we've eliminated a shed, which is a, which is a nonconformity, and we've just, and we've, we've built up above the garage adding bulk to a nonconformity, but I think that.
We're also moving the garage so it is no longer nonconforming against the setbacks.
Against the setbacks, so.
So that's another nonconformity that's being eliminated.
That's being eliminated, and I want to commend you on doing a great job. Would, would someone like to make a motion? Kevin?
Someone like to make a motion to approve 22/23-1. The testimony and evidence presented, it's, it lessons in nonconformities, especially one where a shed was, look, appears to be mostly over a property line, and our regulations allow us to do that.
Okay, could I get a second to that motion? All those in favor? Sorry, yes.
I, I just have a reservation.
Sure.
I'm all in favor of the garage. My concern, as implied by my question before, was that when you look at this, the new porch will be closer to the street than anything else on that street that I consider. But you know, if you look at this, what was, what's there now, what is, what brings it out further is the fact that these steps are going to be up to code with the new constructions. And that's, that's what you want, and it's not overbearing, we're left and right, they can groceries down, have the ability to open the store door and be safe, so they don't have to backwards down the steps. We've, we've seen this so many times here.
Yeah, my, my only concern is whether there isn't another solution for what you could do by stretching that porch out, or, as I suggested before, a rear entry. With all the construction that's going on back there, I can't believe that it would be that big of a.
What's, I mean, what's, what's the difference in space? And if that makes it, if they determine that the refilling members, if this is the safest way for them to get in the house, what's the difference?
If I may.
No, you can't talk, it's too late now, sorry, fortunately.
I think that they're putting the wheelchair ramps here in the front. I don't know that they'll be able to do that.
I'm sorry?
I don't know that they'll be able to do the new construction plus the ramps in there.
Well, actually, the, the new plan has more space between the house and the garage than the old plan, which is in the system condition. I don't know where the rear door is, it doesn't show up on the drawing.
Where does the rear door enter into the house, the middle of the house?
We don't have a floor plan, so we don't know.
We got the new system.
To answer your question, the, the old one is eight by five, and this is 10 by 83.
Eight by five.
So we're, we're talking about minimal, and I'm guessing that they, they took the time to think this out, and how they're going to get there.
I'm, I'm sure they did, but as I say, this becomes the most closest to the street of any property along there, and I just don't understand why there couldn't be a longitudinal increase rather than towards the street increase, and still accomplish the goal of, say, progress, ingress.
Is that an indication of what repair of this area or access to?
Right, so I think it's hard to assess the issue of hardship. The only thing we've got going is a reduction in nonconformity, but given that this is a, you know, that's a very, that's, that's an easy trade-off in my mind.
Right, yeah, right, and I agree with you, because if we just, if we're trading off the shed for a slightly larger front way, and, and we want to be, we want to be able to safely move our parents in and out of our house, okay, I understand that, there's no, I forgot.
There's no fight about that.
There's no fight about that, and I think that, I think legitimately, we can get away with, because of the reduction, because of the movement of the shed, reduction of that surface area, and that I think we'll be fine.
So, thinking back at a previous appeal, I can remember the building inspector saying that this is what the code is, but it would be better if it came out further.
Further.
So I don't, I don't think that, knowing that, experiencing that on this board, I'm not, I don't think that anybody in this building would have a problem with it.
And they've done such a nice job of trying to put everything within the envelope.
They're also moving the septic.
Yeah. So, based on Kevin's motion, which I'll keep in play, could I, we have a second on that. I'd like to get a vote. All those in favor? Aye. So, all those opposed? Nay, nay, okay, so, based on that, Kevin was a, was a go, Alfred Wilcox was a negative, Erin Caldwell was a go, Charles Gaten was a go, and Jaclyn Prast was a go. You've got your motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Now we're moving on to 22/23-2C. Shannon Taitman and Tamara Wasserman.
Hi, yes.
I only had one problem. I couldn't get into your backyard. I couldn't even see it. You saw it? Oh, so you were able to visually go back there?
I was, I, sorry, knocked on the door.
Nobody was there, and I couldn't open the gate looking, because it looks like it's locked from the back.
Sorry, we have a secret bed in front of the sign.
If you just walk around.
So, so Kevin, you've seen it then, right? Okay, cool. I just wanted someone to see it.
I, no one was there.
Yeah, no one was there when I was there, so everyone watching, there's a secret entrance.
I'm Shannon Scott Taitman, now you'll see Scott on, that's a letter from my manager, you'll see Scott on, and that's me. And I'm Tamara Wasserman. So we're asking for variance to put in a small, new ground saltwater flat pool, in fact, you are. The reason we're asking for variance is because we are sort of restricted by our septic, distance to neighbors, and the only space that we can put it, but that is also as far as possible away from the wetlands, is the space indicated on the map.
One of the, one of the confusing parts, I was having a hard time understanding what the septic system was doing.
Let me, let me tell you what it is. Are you, do you know the distribution box?
Oh, yeah, I know the distribution boxes, yeah.
What they, I don't know how they, how they got to this, if there's a map to the septic.
Right.
If they had somebody come out, because what they use is a snake that goes down there.
Right.
That has a camera, also has a transponder.
Right.
So you get to a certain spot and you see it, and you, you go out with the locator.
You tag it.
So you know where the D-box is, you know where the, where the fields or the drywall or whatever it is. So I, I was, I was pretty confident in that. I also, I'm sorry.
I was just, I had a question on that, so.
Yeah, so we had the, actually, the septic service company came out and they marked it for us to let us know exactly where it was, where a potential reserve was. We had a soil scientist came out to mark the wetlands to make sure that we were on mark with that. Of course, we had a survey, the survey to come out, and this is, I think, maybe the third or fourth iteration of this map, but it's the only one that I turned in. I didn't follow up the other versions because there was misinformation.
And I guess what I'm asking is, the pool is as close to the septic system as we can get without getting into trouble?
You know, I, I didn't, you know, when I let me, and I didn't ask him any questions, you know, I'm thinking if it's me, I'm, I'm not putting the pool back here unless I have to.
Right.
But if you, probably the most important thing that you didn't see, not going in the backyard, is allowing each property line on mature trees.
Okay, yeah.
And, you know, you don't, it would take a lifetime to replace, remember, I think there's three on one side and two on another?
There's, there's five, or technically six on one side, and there's one on the other side, no label.
These are mature trees, these are not something that were planted five or 10 years ago. These have been there for, you know, 50 years probably before the house.
Before the house.
You know, I mean, probably when the house was built, when they were planted. So I mean, so you have that, the issue, you know, because DEP says, you know, put it over, put it over on the side where the shed is, but they didn't go there either.
Right, exactly.
So, I mean, I, I, I think it's, the overriding factor is you don't want to lose those trees.
No, I understand.
You know, the amount of water, you know, as far as, you know, with our high water table, I mean, these trees drink more water than grass. Why would you want to lose that?
Why don't I read in the DEP letter? So I'll do that right now. To Old Sabre Zoning Board of Appeals, August 2nd, 2022, care of Chris Costa, town planner from Marcy L. Ballin, Senior Coastal Planner, Connecticut DEPLWRD, subject Connecticut DEEP LWRD, comments on coastal site plan review for 228 Maple Ave, Old Sabre, Connecticut. Dear Board Members, thank you for forwarding the above referenced coastal site plan review, C, uh, CSPR, for our review and comment to the Land and Water Resource Division LWRD received on July 14, 2022. The project is to add a 15 by 30 foot, 450 square foot saltwater pool within 36 feet of tidal wetland, where 15 foot setback is required. where fifteen foot setback is required. The LWRD has reviewed the proposal for consistency with the goals and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, and offers the following comments. The application notes that the only possible location for the pool is where proposed as a twenty-five foot setback is required from the onsite well. We recommended this be confirmed as a survey does not note a well location. It shows one twenty-five foot line and six D-box stakes where the setback would presumably be maintained from. If other locations are available, example, near shed area along southern property line to better maintain the required uh, wetland setback, we recommend those be explored. If the best pool location is indeed as proposed, then we recommend a five to ten foot wide riparian vegetated buffer be planted. Native non-invasive shrubs, ETC, as mitigation for not meeting the setback requirements. Find the Yukon Coastal Riparian Toolkit and easy to use tool for planning such a buffer in coastal areas for more information. HTTPS dot slash slash media period clear period Yukon period ed slash project slash CRLG slash index period HTM. The guide offers a simple interactive tool for planning what, for what plants would work best along the coastal shoreline, plus the design sketches and other useful information. The ecological preservation benefits of a native riparian vegetated buffer have been studied and shown to minimize potential flooding, sedimentation, erosion impacts to the wetlands and resources while increasing nutrient and pollution uptake from any fertilizers, fertilizers and applications used. Site plan details include any potential patio around or a wall to support the pool have not been included and should be outlined. We recommend any potential patio to be permeable to maximize infiltration at the source and, and any significant wall proposed to support pool height be detailed so as it assures it not deemed a flood and erosion control structure, which are highly discouraged as new structures consistent with the SF ECS back sheet attached. These comments are often pursuant to CGS Section 22A dash 105 through 109 of the CCMA and do not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Feel free to reach out with any questions as you leave us. So I've read that. So now we have that replay. So if that appears to be the only location where the pool can go, since it can't be near the well or the septic system.
So we have the applicant notes on the drawing for us where the well is.
There's no go.
Are you on city water?
No, no. No, no, we just, we have, yeah, we're on city water.
Oh, you're on city water?
I'm looking for here, right? I didn't notice a wellhead or anything.
I didn't see any, I didn't go back, so I don't know. So I guess there is, they're on city water, which I was, I thought they would be. So we don't have to worry about the well.
Right.
It's just location as, as associated with the septic system, which I know there's rules and regulations. I don't happen to know them offhand, but.
For septic?
For septic. It's pool from septic.
They have to, every five years they have to have it.
No, 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 I'm talking about distance of a pool from a septic, from a leach field.
Twenty-five feet. Twenty-five feet, which is where we, it's actually, that's just beyond that part, that point where we have the pool part. That's the twenty-five feet from.
Can you comment on the wall?
Not the wall.
Yeah.
Are there any walls? Is this pool just going to be in-ground?
Uh, in-ground and would have a patio around it.
Probably stone.
Stone.
Something forest like I said.
Okay.
The fifteen by thirty was max, but it's likely going to be much smaller.
We could, you know, we get to, we're deliberating.
Right, we can add, yeah, to it, right. Okay, do, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Um, I did, uh, for what it's worth, I did, uh, so I, my, uh, the neighbors that we share a fence with, um, I reached out to them. It came to my attention this weekend that it would probably be a good idea to have letters from the neighbors and uh, in a short amount of time, I just reached out when I could. So one responded, one did not. Uh, but I do have a copy of the letter and five copies. I can give you six.
Do you want to read it in?
Uh, sure. Uh, there's only variance board. Does come to our attention that our neighbor Tamara Wasserman and her husband Scott have applied to install a swimming pool in their backyard at 228 Maple Ave. Tamara and Scott are great neighbors with wonderful ethics and a high regard for Old Sable ecology. We understand, we understand Tamara and Scott have applied for variance to install the pool and we wholeheartedly support their petition request for variance approval sincerely Walter Douglas Johnson, Joan, Al, Algen Johnson. Did they get an address? Did you get an address on that? Uh, 232 Maple Ave, 232 Maple Ave.
Yeah.
Did you get a copy? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Plus, anybody want to?
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, we'll certainly be willing to, uh, as some of the recommendations that were mentioned in the, uh, the letter, we'll certainly, uh, follow through with that.
So I guess the question I had is that, so if we were to impose some of the recommendations from DEP.
Brief recess.
Okay, brief recess. Five-minute recess. Sorry. I know.
Okay, we're resuming.
Resuming, okay. The one segment, Corey? Okay. Uh, in regards to the pool size, do we know exactly what size the pool is?
Uh, we're trying to find, uh, something that's fairly shallow, so, but that will also fit, but.
It's not going to exceed fifteen by thirty?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And.
Well, here it's twelve by thirty.
Right. Right. And that is. On the, on the health district, you have a twelve by thirty in the application that they approved.
That's what we had discussed at the time and, uh, I think the, uh, landscaper had recommended fifteen by thirty in terms of the mask, but, uh, we're probably looking at closer to between eleven and ten by twenty-nine.
Since, since the Connecticut River Area Health District approved a twelve by thirty, if you want to go to fifteen by thirty, you should, you're going to need to have a new document.
Oh, and twelve by thirty is.
Okay, so twelve by thirty.
So it's amended to.
So that.
Not to exceed three hundred and sixty.
Right, not to exceed the twelve by thirty or three hundred and sixty square feet, not to exceed that, okay.
And it's still at five feet?
Uh, that's, yeah. Well, four feet is where, yeah, so, but giving this, this may be five feet, but we're looking at four foot depths.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
But it's going to be, okay, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Uh, I think we've discussed before, any recommendations or have to comply with that, uh, further detail.
So, yeah, so any, any, anything that we put in regards to DEP's request because we're in that, in that upper zone, like, yeah, you don't have a problem, no problem. Okay, fine. With that, couple of questions?
Sure.
What's the elevation difference over the tall foot span of this pool? How many inches?
Um, in, in terms of what you mean, in terms of the, how?
You're not going to have the, the edge closest to the house below grade. Right? That'll be flush with gray or maybe just a little bit above, so water runs away.
Yes.
From the edge of the pool. On the downhill side, as you get closer to the marsh, how much is going to be exposed? Is it going to be six inches, twelve inches?
Uh, well, we're hoping that, um, I, I don't know, actually, uh, it ideally would be adjusted so that there wouldn't be spill over to run down into the marsh so that, uh, I don't know.
It's also relatively flat?
Yeah, well, there is, it's currently flat.
Is the backyard flat?
Yeah.
There's very modest slope. In a seventy-five foot run, I don't think you lose a foot.
Okay.
So it's basically, and as far as there's, there's no runoff because.
It's pretty flat.
Well, it's just, it's going to catch any rain. But like, towards the marsh, it slopes down a little bit more. And that's behind the fence.
And that's where it goes.
No, behind fence somewhere back here. And behind the fence, it does go down a little bit further, but that's, I'm not even sure that's on their property. Okay, so, so in the area where the pool is going, it's essentially level?
Yes, yeah, okay. Yeah, the area in the back where it's flat, um, it actually, it does slip off there and a por- portion of it is technically on property as well, but that's not within the marsh at that point, sir.
And then the other question I had was, you've got to have at least a four-foot fence.
Yes, that's.
How are you going to accomplish that?
Well, we're also redoing our fence in the yard anyway, so we're going to, uh.
It's going to be a perimeter fence?
Yes.
And what are the materials of that going to be?
Uh, we currently have a wood fence there that, uh, is rotting and falling apart. So we were discussing with both our neighbors, kind of, you know, to sort of, um, have them sort of be able to let us know what works, but, uh, I don't know, I'm not sure what the best option is.
As long as it's built, it's, it's just the fence is built to code for a pool, you know, because it's got to have a certain height.
It's got to be four feet.
Yeah, it's got to have certain spacings in between and the side slats can only be at certain heights.
I'll say the fence in the back, the one that's sort of in marsh, it is not four feet, but that's going the way we are building it.
And since we don't have any visual impact from.
From any, from an.
Right, so we don't have to, we don't have to deal with that.
I was only worried about the sign neighbors.
Okay.
Just six feet down both sides.
Right, that was the problem, not be able to see the backyard. That's why I'm glad you got a chance to look at it.
I'm glad to this, I'm always, always afraid to go in the backyard. I'm happy when I can see it from the street.
Right.
And that fear that there's going to be a dog, a very large dog coming around the corner.
Maybe a raccoon.
That invisible fence.
Maybe a raccoon or a possum, but.
Is the pool the size covered all season?
Uh, it's going to be covered all season, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, if this, I, I believe if there's no other questions.
You have nothing else to add?
Uh.
I have nothing else to add.
I will then, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here speaking in for or against this project?
If you're online, if you can use the hand read function.
Minutes, seconds, you let me know. With that, I will close public comment. And I'd like to open it up for discussion. Uh, I'd like to, on discussion, I think we need to take into consideration what the, the recommendations from DEEP in regards to the, uh, the native non-invasive shrubs uh, at five to ten foot wide riparian vegetation. I think we should include that because I think that will, uh, it's important.
Using Yukon as a reference, you'd be even.
Yes, and, uh, other than the positioning of the pool, which is to be twelve by thirteen or, or less.
Twelve by thirty.
I mean, twelve by thirty or less, okay? But not to exceed a twelve by thirty pool.
Or three hundred and sixty.
Or three hundred and sixty square feet, okay? So other than that, would, is there any discussion with anyone else? Like to talk about any other parts of this?
No.
Kevin would like to talk about any other parts of this?
No, I, I think we just, nobody else has anything.
You just want to give the opportunity.
The only other thing, do we have the, uh, agreement that it's to be purvius, not impervious?
Oh, yes, I was going to get it. We're going to, I'm going to bring that into the DEP, so, on, in regards to that, so with, they had also recognized purvius pavers around the pool for, and, and so we want to take that into consideration, all recommendations.
Yep.
So with that, is there any other discussion that we'd like to have?
I'd like to make a motion if it's appropriate, sir.
Kevin, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty-two slash twenty-three dash two C. And the reasons are that the backyard has mature trees, you know, you know, DEP had pointed out that there could be over near the shed, but there's, you know, you don't want to sacrifice mature trees. And it would be unreasonable to ask the applicant to move their septic system.
Right.
Um, I think they're giving up a lot by having it all the way in the back of the yard, but that's, that's the best they can do.
Right.
Um, you know, also, uh, conditioning it with DEP. They don't mind, I'd like to, I should probably just.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If the best location, pool location is indeed as proposed, then we recommend a five to ten foot wide riparian vegetated buffer to be planted. Native non-invasive shrubs, et cetera, as mitigation not to, for not meeting the setback requirement. Find the Yukon Coastal Riparian Toolkit and easy to use planning for such a buffer in coastal areas. For more information, it's, uh, media dot clear dot Yukon dot edu slash project slash CRLG slash index dot HTM. The guide offers us a simple and interactive tool for planning for what other plant, for what plants would work best along the coastal shoreline, plus design sketches and other useful information. The ecological preservation benefits of nat- the natural riparian vegetated buffers have in study to show to minimize potential flooding, sediment erosion, sediment and erosion impacts the wetlands and resources while increasing nutrient and pollution uptake from any fertilizers and app- and applications used. Site plan details, including any potential patio around or wall to, to support the pool have been, have not been included and should be outlined. We recommend any potential patio be permeable to maximize infiltration at the source and any significant wall proposed to the pool height be detailed as so it assures it is not, it is not deemed a flood and erosion control structure is, which are highly discouraged as new structures consistent with SF ECS back sheet attached. Also that the pool not exceed three hundred and sixty square feet or twelve by thirty.
A second.
There's one other condition I would suggest.
What would you, what would you like to, like to make a friendly amendment?
It, it would be a very friendly amendment.
Perfect.
I happen to have a pool and mine is filled with diatomaceous earth and I don't know how you're planning on filtering yours, but I imagine that's a solution. And there is a system where, which I have, because I butt, butt on the marsh too, where you capture the DE that you, there's recycled and just stick it in the garbage bag and take it to the dump. You don't pump it into the marsh. So I would ask that you, um, also have that as a condition in the motion.
Uh, so that, we're going to add that friendly amendment in?
Here, can you say it in like two sentences?
Did you catch that?
Don't pump it in the marsh.
Thank you. Have a second, so all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Oh, Carrie's, uh, you, good luck with your pool.
Enjoy.
Enjoy. Enjoy it.
Thank you, we'll follow up with, uh, the amendments.
Yeah, sure.
Your big...
That makes sense.
Now we have to, uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the camp. Can I get a second?
Second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Glad you got a chance to go in the backyard.
I did too, you just walk around.
I couldn't find a way in.
Did you go in the back?
Yeah.
Okay, so you know what I was talking about.
I went around the... Okay, uh, last, our last applicant is twenty-two slash twenty-three dash three C, Gina Cole. Uh, seeks a variance of par ten point seven, uh, one slash ten point seven two, non-conforming enlargement change, par twenty-four point six, that's two structural coverage gateway conservation zone, fifteen percent allowed, uh, twenty point oh four proposed, and par fifty-eight point two and par fifty-eight point six gateway riparian buffer and structure setback, one hundred feet required, slash all activity within, within a, or activity within the hundred foot proposed of the gateway regulation, with construction of a three hundred and thirty-seven square foot pool and hot tub and an eighty square foot second-story deck at Five Lighthouse Lane, map twenty-three slash lot seventy-seven dash core residence, a district gateway, uh, conservation zone, coastal area management zone, A E ten flood zone. I answer only one question.
Yes.
When I went to visit, were you already building that deck?
For the record, for reference, I mean, it needs change separately?
I was just confused.
I'm Peter Cole, Gina's husband, I'm right, she didn't work with Jim in this whole process, but, um, my wife had pulled, that deck was being built, we had pulled a permit, um, for that deck.
So you have a permit for that deck?
Yes, and we got to that point, and then I believe, of course, my wife's not here, but we had the inspection done.
Okay, I was, I was the only question I asked, 'cause I didn't know why it was on here, with the deck.
Chris, Chris Costa wanted to be included.
You understand, it's confusing?
Yes, yes.
'Cause we didn't approve it yet, and now you're building it.
Yeah.
You say like, boy, yeah, yeah, okay.
Run that one again, so, they gave you a building permit?
They gave you for the, for the deck.
For the deck, you started...
Yeah, and we got to, to a point, and we left it open, so the inspection could be done, so that you see the, the actual process and the connections and things like that. And I believe they come out and approve that, so get that, get that.
So there's no, there's no stop order or anything on that?
No, no, everything is...
But now that they're proposing a pool, um, and that wasn't really shown on these plans, that's why it says proposed deck above, and it's listed in on the, uh, that, it's a matter of clarity.
Excuse me, so can you identify?
So, now that I can do, can you please identify yourself?
My name is James Siperly, um, I'm a certified soil scientist and perform the title wetland delineation on the site. I'm also a city planner in Middletown, so I'm helping them, uh, go through the process here. A little bit of background, uh, this project was approved, if this is right on South Cove, um, the project was, uh, the pool proposal was approved by the, uh, Health District, um, I got a copy of it, it should be included in your, uh, in your packet. Um, we applied to the, um, coastal, uh, site plan review, uh, I don't know if you received any comments back from them?
Did you get, have you, have you received what DEEP said, and have you received what? I think you should read them.
Okay, no, we didn't, you didn't get any correspondence.
Okay, I think it's important.
I'll make a copy.
Oh, please, yeah, I wonder why that didn't come to us?
Yeah, I think we'll take a recess.
Oh, okay, okay.
A ten-minute recess, so you can get a chance, I'll give you my copy.
Oh, 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 thank you.
But she, uh, oh, but I wanted you to see the, oh, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Oh, we do, we go back in session, you asked my question.
I just wanted to make sure they saw the documents, okay, before we... Yeah, before we, before we started, within the clock starts. You get one copy?
I have your original.
So I have my original.
Oh, I just gave them.
It's okay, it's okay, you keep it, I have, we have this one right here. I just wanna make sure that you get, I just wanna make sure you get a chance to read it.
So, um, based on Marcy Valent's comments.
Thank you.
It is outside of the A E ten flood zone.
Yeah, I just wanted you to make sure, I just wanted you to make sure that you, that you saw this, these two documents.
Mm-hmm, but, um, so she's saying that the proposed pool is within it, and it's clearly not in it.
Well, that was my question, that's why I wanted you to be able to respond.
I don't know why she would say that, um, because it clearly, look at the site plan, um, I don't have a board out there, I'll show you, I'll hold it up, and show you during campus, yeah, here is the, this line here, line here, uh, I'm looking at those, so that, this line here is the flood zone. The pool is well within, not being in it, there's an existing stone wall here, the pool's gonna be tucked in that existing wall, so it's not in, this is the flood zone coming out here, it's clearly not in the flood zone, but her letter states that it is.
No, I wanted you to give you that.
For the record, I know you were there, has anybody other, oh, oh, great, okay, okay, so you've seen the property.
Yeah, that, that, I just wanted clarification on that.
Sure, and, um, I read Torrance, Torrance's comments, um, they mentioned the glass panels, and those glass panels are not, they're not reflective, they're, they're, they have a coating, they're the same panels that are allowed, that are installed at the, uh, Sabre Point Inn, so...
Well, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, to...
I understand, I appreciate that, I don't understand why we're getting them tonight and not earlier, they, oh, it was dated August eighth.
That's right, I just want, yeah, I just, they come late.
They, they come, yeah.
I just, I just wanted you to have, I didn't, in case you wanted some more time before I started.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure.
I, I appreciate that as a courtesy, for sure, and the same thing happens in Middletown all the time, too, you get comments from the engineering department the night of hearing.
So, do, do you wanna continue to move forward based on everything you've got, right, with, on this? You feel confident to move forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, fine, yes, I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, sure, sure, so you do have some aerial photos, I guess, in your packet as well. You can see that, the edge of, the edge of South Cove, and, yeah, this is the existing, existing retaining wall, that's sort of about three feet, four feet high.
Higher than certain parts.
It's, it's higher than certain parts, and that is where the proposed pool's gonna be tucked in, it's gonna be a custom-designed shape to, uh, fit in that space, um, there's also gonna be, uh, filter, uh, house, it's gonna be right up against the, the, the main house here. The total square footage of the pool itself is three hundred and ninety-one square feet, but with the, um, hot tub in the, um, the, the rating within this area here is to the total four hundred and thirty-seven square feet. Uh, the tidal wetlands were delineated and shown on the map, that was prepared by, uh, Robert, uh, Frank, yeah, yeah, Fanner, he's the, um, the surveyor. And the, the pool's gonna be a gait pool, right? So, um, and as far as, it's a saltwater pool, and as far as the, um, filtering, like you said, that's the same system, that will be done, um, familiar with that. The house is served by, um, public order, and in the front is the septic system, and frankly, this, oh, another thing.
I'm gonna interrupt you first. When you say in front, are you talking towards the street or towards the marsh?
Yes.
That's what, yeah, towards the street.
Right, okay.
Thank you, yeah, uh, towards the north side of the house, the south side of the house is South Cove. In Torrance's letter, he also mentioned that there's an alternative spot for the pool, and I am very curious, he doesn't mention where that spot would be. I don't believe there is an alternative, uh, spot for the pool, because the septic system area is in the front, and it's a fairly large septic system, uh, area. So, we feel, uh, that this is really the only ideal place for the pool, it's outside of the, um, it's outside of the flood zone, it's close to the tidal wetlands, but it's the farthest away it could be from that, because there's tidal wetlands, uh, on the, uh, east side of the house, that's called the boat basin, the wetlands kind of come, the tidal wetlands come in, and there's like a little basin there, and then it, it comes back out on the adjacent property, but that tidal wetlands comes right up, and then comes around. The, um, fact that that pool is gonna be at grade, that, that whole lawn area right now, uh, is completely flat. The pool will not be seen from South Cove at all, and he mentions the glass panels, but those glass panels have a coating, and there's no reflective index, it's like a, the kind of frame glass that you get at a, uh, at a framing store, you know, they have a panel coating that just doesn't reflect light, but you can see through it. And the reason they chose that kind of a fencing is because, you know, you won't see like a wrought iron fence or a wooden fence, it's not gonna block, block any views, and, um, similarly, uh, I had photos that I took of a friend of mine who just installed a pool in the town of Guilford, uh, no, Madison, uh, right next door to the Madison Beach Hotel, and you can see, he's just walking distance from, uh, the beach, and that was, uh, just approved, and you can see how the, um, how it's secure to an existing poured concrete wall, but this can be done similarly on top of the existing stone wall that is surrounding, there won't be any, uh, erosion, um, simply because that wall will act as a, um, natural steel fence. I think that's probably all I have, um...
They're, 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 um, suggesting them being, uh, the flow-through structure be preferable over the glass.
So what, oh, what kind of?
Flow-through.
Right.
Placing a solid glass fence top, one...
Why don't I do this? Let me read them in, I'll read, I'm gonna read, let me read both of them in, so, 'cause Kevin is correct. Two Old Sabre zoning board of appeals, uh, August third, twenty twenty-two, uh, care of Chris Costa, town planner from Marcy, coastal planner Connecticut, D E B L W R D, subject Connecticut, D E E P W R D, comments on coastal site plan review for five lighthouse, Old Sabre, Connecticut, dear board members, thank you for forwarding the above referenced coastal site plan review, C S D R, far review and comments to the land and water resource division, L W I D, received on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The project is to add an in-ground custom pool, eighty, uh, a custom pool, eighty square foot second-story deck, and a glass fence atop the existing retaining wall within a A ten flood zone. The variances are required for structures within the hundred-foot riparian buffer for a structure setback for Connecticut River Gateway. The L W I D has reviewed the proposal for consistency with the goals and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, C C M A, and offers the following comments. The application notes that the best location of the pool as proposed and notes this location be located outside the tidal wetland setback area outside the flood zone, in fact, the pool's proposed within an A ten flood zone, just outside the L I M W A zone, limited of moderate wave action, subject to a direct wave action. Placing a solid glass fence atop the existing retaining wall should be evaluated as, as, as close to this L I M W A zone, which is subject to direct wave action and may render the glass fence subject to those forces during storm events. A flow-through structure may be preferable. As a side courtesy note, the pavers and brick patio and steps to the west side, which is not the subject of the current proposal, may or may not be connected to the existing house. If there is a structural connection, as it appears, the applicant should be aware that a substantial improvement per N F I P FEMA in the future would require the home to meet the higher velocity zone and F I P FEMA construction standards, pilings, breakaway walls, et cetera. B F E, as the A E ten L I M W A line runs through the patio as shown on the site plan, we note the fifty-foot tidal wetland setback appears to be maintained while the gateway hundred-foot riparian and structure buffer is not being complied with significantly, and gateway comments regarding this call should be carefully considered. These comments are offered pursuant to C G S section twenty-two A, well, five to one nine of the C C M A, and does not necessarily reflect other plans and zoning considerations, which may apply, feel free to reach out with any questions, and now go to gateway, so I'm just gonna leave that in. Uh, Mr. Charles Gaden, Chairman, Old Sabre Zoning Board of Appeals, three oh two Main Street, Old Sabre, Connecticut, six three four seven five, subject variance, application Gina Cop, five, uh, Lighthouse Lane, bracket M twenty-three, comma, lot seven dash four, bracket. Dear Mr. Gaden, the Old Sabre Zoning Board of Appeals has submitted an application for the above referenced project for agreement pursuant to section twenty-five dash one oh two H of the Connecticut general statutes. The application proposes the, uh, construction of a four hundred and thirty-square-foot pool and hot tub within a lawn area behind the stone wall with an eighty-square-foot raised deck. It is, I understand, that the framing on the deck is already in place, but was constructed without a zoning permit, which you say that we actually have. The variance, if approved, would allow the unpermitted encroachment to remain and finish a second-floor story balcony. These comments are provided for the force consideration at the public hearing scheduled to commence on Wednesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-two. Finally, staff and members of the Gateway Commission have reviewed this, uh, submitted application materials. Staff and some members of the Gateway Commission have viewed the property. At the Gateway Commissioners meeting on Thursday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, the members reviewed the plans and photos taken at the site and voted to reject if the variance, uh, your application be denied, and the proposed construction is adverse in the project protective mission of the Gateway Commission as codified in section twenty-five dash one oh two A through one oh two S of the Connecticut general statutes. Specifically, the proposal will add more impervious surface to an already under, overdeveloped site, which has major encroachment of, on the hundred, uh, foot gateway setback and riparian buffer, and a portion of the hundred-foot setback in the riparian buffer that has not yet been enclosed is a port for the health of the river, and must be protected. Further, there is another location on the site where the pool could be built, which is outside the hundred-square-foot buffer, section fifty-eight point six, and, and the gateway requires, uh, a required vegetation buffer, section fifty-eight point two, bracket. Concern was expressed regarding the glass fence that would enclose the pool in the proposed location due to the light reflective impact of the glass. Finally, extending the coverage to just over twenty percent where the coverage requirement, uh, of fifteen percent is excessive in the highly visible location of South Cove, thank you for your considerations. So, I've read that in, and I guess my other question, on the, on the proposed deck above, is that built, is, is that deck built into your zoning compliance chart?
Yes, it was added, um...
'Cause I can't tell, that's why I need to know, because...
So, um, Chris looked at that, and because, yeah, it's add, let's see, um...
Because when I add the two, it doesn't add up.
Well, maximum floor area.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not really like, Matt, so we had, she, we had a conversation with the, um, surveyor, I'm trying to remember what they, what we talked about that.
But it says, it says existing, and it, it proposes the same, but it's, um, it's still only a twenty point seven percent. Right, forty is the max.
Yeah, I believe she wanted to include that, because it was, um...
The only reason I'm doing this is because, uh, we, we... The only reason I'm doing this is because, because the reality gateway's fifteen percent. So now we're, now, and now we're closing it on twenty and they're at, they're at nineteen point nine and I, I don't know if that has the the deck built into it.
Well, yeah, well, you're, okay, I was looking at, but if you look at, it goes from nineteen to nineteen-nine and it's listed on the plan, so it would have to be included.
Yeah.
I'm just confused because the, the proposed deck is built.
That's why I'm saying it's included.
That's why it's included.
That's why it's.
But I'm adding, so I'm just not.
The numbers are confusing.
The numbers are confusing.
Well, it's worse than that.
Yeah.
Because as I look at this, you have an existing garage sixteen hundred and eighty-one square feet.
Yeah.
An existing house forty-six sixty-five square feet. Paver and brick patio and steps twenty-seven forty-nine square feet. You add those up, I get ninety-three eighty-five, which doesn't match any of the numbers on the zoning compliance chart.
If you go from, if you add these numbers, somebody wants to add these numbers.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hang on, let me get, clear, give me numbers. Eighty, eighty.
Plus three ninety-one point five.
Three ninety-one point five.
Hey, remember that number?
Four seventy-one point five.
Okay, take nine five, nine five nine two point five.
Plus?
No, clear.
Clear, okay, clear, sorry. Clear?
Take nine five nine two point five.
Nine five nine two point five.
And subtract, what was that other number?
Four seven one point five.
And if you come up with nine one five five point five, it's included.
Nine one two one.
So there's thirty, thirty square feet more.
Yeah.
Thirty square feet versus ninety-five hundred is, you know, maybe that's a hundred percent. I mean, you're right at twenty. Although the other thing that's not included that I can tell is all of the stone walls. Which are structures under our code.
I think it's over, over six feet.
That's if it's a retaining wall.
That's true.
So, and the retaining walls here are not over six feet.
No.
But structures, our, our definition of a structure includes a stone wall. And there's lots of stone wall there.
Only, is it a fence or is it, is it a?
It's retaining wall.
It's a stone wall.
Yeah.
You mentioned something about six feet. What's the law?
If it's a retaining wall over seven feet, it's a structure.
No, if it's, why not, it's a retaining, it's a retaining wall. Probably, yeah, over, over six feet.
I thought it was seven.
Could be, yeah. Then it's, it's forgiven because it's, it's needed.
Right, for, to retain this.
To retain it behind it.
But if, if it's a stone wall like these stone walls, they're just a structure.
Well, if this don't want, this existing stone wall isn't there, because there's parts of the wall. If you're walking in the lower level of the yard around, following the, the wall around. Think, you know, I'm close to see that six feet, it's pretty much at.
Oh, it's less than that.
Yeah, when you go around outside, look, if you have, if you have a retaining wall that's over four feet. You can use that, I think, against your requirement for a fence. Because the whole point is that you don't want kids going over, going over into your pool. So then you can comply with zoning if it's at least four feet high, which is, I think, the required height for a pool.
So that stone wall that's there.
It's going to become a fence.
Well, you could make that into your fence.
That's good news. I don't want this bad news to air.
You checked with the building inspector. That's what I did in an old house.
I just, the math isn't adding up.
No, the math doesn't add up.
The math does not add up.
I did it twice.
Yeah.
Before I even came.
So, I, I, again, the surveyor is not here. He's the one that did the calculations. We can get clarification on those numbers.
Would you like to continue it?
I think we should continue.
Continue it, sure.
Yeah, continue.
Could you also, when you do continue, confirm the zoning permit for the deck?
Sure.
The building permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the building.
Building permit, yeah.
And by the way, just so you know, this commission, this board by law is not entitled to hold it against you.
Right, right. Whether you have a building permit or not.
Yeah, I don't doubt that this guy went in.
Yeah. I'm just trying to understand if the existing.
The deck.
If, if, in the existing numbers, is the proposed deck in it? Because it's on the.
What, what I think is based on, you know, we're off by thirty.
Right.
But I, I, I get what Chubb is saying. I think that you're probably right at twenty percent without the walls, but if the walls turn into a fence.
Right.
Then it doesn't count, doesn't count. So that's an interesting point. So if he has a four foot, average four foot, four foot height fence and maybe it's three and a half feet in some areas, if he has stone put by a mason to build that up to a four feet, that becomes.
All you have to do is verify with the building department. What constitutes a wall for a pool? And, and, because it's not like, say, yeah, gotcha. So, and I, I don't know.
I don't know. I just know in an old life.
Thinking out loud, you know.
But, yeah, so you would have a fence at the patio here. It's a fence that goes to the point of the wall. There it is.
Then unobstructed out to your view.
Right.
Okay.
Now you have a question?
You're going to have, you're going to have a lot of wind on that.
Okay, excuse me, yes, Brenda? One second. Brenda, would you like to say?
Is it possible also, since this is going to be continued, to have Torrance clarify where he thinks the pool could go? Since.
I'll, I'll get clarification on that, because I spoke with Torrance today, okay?
And also. And the other thing is, there's the comment about securing the the panels to pavers of stone wall as opposed to securing it to a concrete wall. Is that as secure? Is a stone wall that is secured to going to stay in place in the event of a storm?
I'm going to get, I'm going to leave that to the building department.
Yeah, we'll get a clarification on that. My, my thought on, on the wall, I, I understand they, they want a breakaway, they want a breakaway wall because of the title issues. Or a, or a flow-through, or a flow-through wall.
Yeah.
Does a, does a fence with the cables make sense? But that flood zone that they're talking about is, the, the pool is outside of that flood zone. Is it, what about title? What about the, the, the title? The tidal wetlands?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's, it's way well outside of the tidal wetlands and the tidal wetlands, denying to delineate typically. You go by vegetation for tidal wetlands. Inland wetlands, you don't go by vegetation, but in the statute defining tidal wetlands, you go by vegetation. And typically, it's a half a foot below mean high tide. That's, that's typically the. And as far as the glare, they're, they're stating a glare from the blast. Can you get something?
Can you get something in writing saying it doesn't have glare, just so we can review that?
Yeah, thank you.
But would that even be approved if it, there's no flow-through?
That's up to us.
That's up to us. We really have a lot of leeway on this, but we, so we interpret, we get to interpret what Gateway wants. We get to interpret what DEEP wants and we can make the final decision. We just try to work within their, their recommendations. What they feel would be suitable. So, hopefully, if there's an issue with reflectivity, we'd like to nip that in the bud.
Yep, I assume that it's something impervious rather than concrete around the pool.
Oh, yeah, that's all, yeah.
We will do that. It's not in there, but.
Well, I got a feeling. Yeah, it's grass lawn and it's going to be, there's going to be an existing planting bed there.
Oh, it does say that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we're going to, we're going to continue, we're not going to close public access. We're going to keep that business open right now. And if you could just dial in the, the numbers on the compliance, zoning compliance chart, zone eight, just so we know that we have.
Certainly, yeah. Yep, okay, thank you very much for everything.
And, and I will. I'm going to, let's see, would someone like to make the motion for continuous? Jack?
I'd like to make the motion to continue twenty-two dash twenty-three dash three CG in a hole until next month's meeting, which is being held Wednesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, thank you very well. Now, under, under new business, I'd just like to state, on next month's meeting, we'll be recognizing Dorothy Alexandra for her years of service with, on ZBA. And both Carl and Chris will be here and will be making a presentation to her. So I just wanted everyone to be aware, if you're here, fine. That will start at five, voting five to six prior to the meeting. Choose to attend, choose not to attend, it's your call, but that's what we're doing.
May I assume this is not a surprise?
This is not a surprise. We were waiting for COVID to end, okay, so that, so we didn't infect her. Under the minutes, I, I have reviewed the minutes from, from the June meeting and I have only one request. Remove special meeting to, to regular meeting. Other than that, I didn't have an issue. Okay, under correspondence and announcements, I don't have any. What? Can I get someone to, with that change, can I get someone to approve the minutes?
Move that we approve.
Can I get a second?
I'm not going to vote on this. I got two absences due to work-related issues.
Okay.
I'm second. I was absent.
All those in favor? Aye. Approved. Correspondence and announcements. Okay, here we go. And the minutes were approved by Charles Gaden. They were approved by.
Unanimous.
You just.
Except for.
Except for Kevin.
And you.
And you.
I would have, Kevin and I were both absent.
Brenda?
It was out because of work-related issues.
Brenda, will you approve the minutes?
I approve.
Okay, perfect.
So.
So Charles Gaden approves the minutes?
But you need to see Brenda.
Oh, I have to see Brenda for the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. For the minutes, I would like to see Brenda Dyson for, and, and, and placement of Kevin Danby. Brenda has approved the minutes. I've approved the minutes. Mr. Wilkins, approve the minutes.
Ms. Caldwell.
Caldwell's approved the minutes. The minutes unanimously passed. Correspondence and announcements, there are none. Committee representation staffing reports, do you have anything that we need to know?
No.
I make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? All those in favor? Aye.